...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tom, take the roll, please.
Mayor King.
Present.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Present.
Councilmember Fisher.
Present.
Baskin.
Present.
Obala.
Present.
Waller.
Present.
Osmah.
Present.
Schuster. Do we have a call, Your Honor?
Thank you, Tom. I have number one's a motion for the adoption of the agenda with the additions.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. I have number two is a motion approving minutes from February twenty-second, 2022.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I have number three is under recognition award Joe Suddenman. We're going to honor him some other time. He's not feeling well, so he'll pop back later. I have number four is a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Moving down to number five, a public hearing is a motion reviewing redistricting plan based on the 2020 census. Ann.
Okay. Coming on here. Can you see my screen okay?
Yep.
Yes.
All right, awesome. So, we went over this information a couple of weeks ago at the work session. This is a public hearing, so we'll go over it again. There's just been a couple, couple minor changes since the last time since we met with the county. So, just to review, the census was completed in 2020, and the state did complete its redistricting by February fifteenth. So, we're ready to go with doing our redistricting, which has to be completed by March twenty-ninth. So, we're having a public hearing tonight. If we get comments or have questions, we always could have another, continue this to the next meeting if there were any issues or questions. So, talking about our city responsibilities, we have a ward system, and we have to divide our wards to as equal as practicable according to statute. So, the city of Austin has three wards, and we're going to put about eighty-seven twenty-five people in each ward. So, this was our old map. You can see over, we used to have three different wards and, or precincts in the third, first ward because of that Turtle Creek annexation, that hot pink area off to the side. So, these were our old boundary lines from 2020. Then, we had made a proposal at the last work session for this kind of split. So, the first ward, first, second, and third precincts are all in the green here. That would all be first ward. The blue is the third ward, and the red is the second ward. Then, when we met with the county, the county, we realized that that would create an island for Austin Township because this here is the Austin Township line. So, that would, they would have to create a separate precinct, Austin Township Ward, just for those particular voters because their county commissioner is in this area. That would have to be a separate county commissioner than who votes over here or up here. So, that was the issue that when we met with the county to make sure that our wards and precincts were compatible with theirs. So, what we did then was we talked with the county, and then we shifted that particular piece of Austin property into the second ward, and then shifted the lines down here in the center a little bit to make up for that population. So, this is our final proposal for redistricting. Again, the most substantial change would be this Turtle Creek one and Turtle Creek two areas. We decided to move everything west of I-90 into the second ward to make that contiguous and not create that island problem for Austin Township. So, our population counts are just within a couple of each other, so we meet that statute very clearly. Most people will be unaffected by this. You know, most people are staying exactly where they were. It will just be these people over here in the Turtle Creek areas, and then in the center of town, they may have shifted a block or two here and there. So, again, the state legislature, we released their official plan. We finalized our plan with the county, so now our next steps would be to adopt that ordinance, to officially set the three wards, and then adopt the resolution setting the polling places, work with the county to inform the voters of their new polling places, and then resume our normal activities for election year, which, since the last time we met, unfortunately there was a death with the first congressional district, so we will have a new primary in May, and then also in May, filing for city council seats will begin. And that's it. Is there any questions on the map and the proposed division? In your materials, the long version with the descriptions of how we described those particular pieces are in there in the ordinance and in the resolution, but it's, it's easier to look at it on a map.
Any questions for Ann, counsel?
I guess, just a comment, I guess, on the, the change. I realize we got to, you know, cater to the county, or they kind of supersede us, but I really hate to see the first ward lose that area out there, Turtle Creek one and two. It's kind of the only area that, that they have that's majorly developable, or one of the few areas, but compared to the other wards. But, I guess that's what happens when we have other jurisdictions to, to worry about.
Right, and we, we went over there a couple of different times and kind of flipped around different scenarios, you know, dividing our third ward differently, dividing, you know, trying to, to break things up differently with the county to try to, you know, make everything work. And that, honestly, you know, we hate to, to flip people a lot too, but that was the cleanest scenario for everyone, so.
Thank you, Ann. Anyone else?
Yep.
Jeff, we could still direct all our calls to you guys, though.
Well, that's fine. I'll take the call.
No, I can't move there.
All right, well, thank you, Ann. So, with that information, looking for a motion for five A, preparation and of redistricting the ordinance?
So moved the motion.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Five B is looking for adoption and publication of the redistricting ordinance.
So moved the ordinance.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Five B is looking for adoption and publication of the redistricting ordinance.
So moved the ordinance.
All in favor, or second? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That says voice vote.
Oh.
Ordinance, roll call.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Osmah.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Ordinance passes six-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. I have number five C is defining the precinct lines and polling places. So moved the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Osmah.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Under bid openings and awards, I have number six, receiving bids for the seasonal supply of bituminous material. Stephen?
Yes, this is the material that our street department crew uses for roadway patching and maintenance throughout the summer, and we bid this out each year. Yulin Brothers, they are the low bidder this year at two-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand five hundred dollars. We do calculate in a mileage factor depending on how far away the plant is located. It's really a number of, of early what it costs us for time and, and trucking, so we do factor that in as well. They are still the low bidder when we, when we do that factor. So, we would recommend awarding this bid to Yulin Brothers, and funds would come out of our, our maintenance, street and highway budget. And just looking at historical bid prices, we are up about seven percent from last year, but when you look out at previous years going back, and we're, we're probably getting back close to the numbers we were seeing in the mid-twenty teens, like twenty thirteen through twenty fifteen, with some of our, our current rates. That's all I have.
Thank you, Stephen. Any questions, counsel? If not, looking for resolution, five number six A, awarding the bid. So moved. Is there a second? Second. Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Osmah.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. I have number seven is a resolution receiving bids for asphalt emulsion oil. Stephen?
This is our road oil that we apply to specific roadways, and we add chips to it. It, it provides a, a, a new surface to the roadway, gives more traction to what used to be a smooth asphalt surface, and provides some longevity to the pavement. This year, our focus for this is going to be on a lot of our parking lots, doing this chip seal in our city-owned parking lots like Riverside and many others. Taking bids, we only received one bidder on this project, HG Miggs. They have been our contractor that we've used for multiple years, and again, as you see when comparing with previous years, we're up about eleven percent, but we're getting back into that range of, of prices that we were seeing again in mid-twenty teens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lang. Counsel, any questions? Looking for resolution, five number seven A, awarding the bid.
So moved the resolution.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Osmah.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Petitions and requests. I have number eight is a resolution approving contract with the Austin Fire Association. Jim?
Good evening, Mayor, counsel. This is a three-year contract covering twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. The first year will be a hundred-and-forty-one-thousand-seven-hundred dollars. Twenty-three and twenty-four will be based on the number of calls, market value, and population, and that is what we use for the 2021 value as well. So, I recommend approval of this contract.
Thank you, Chief. Counsel, any questions? I'm looking for resolution for I have number eight. So moved the resolution.
A second.
Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Osmah.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. I have number nine is a resolution approving a purchase agreement with Troy Cunningham. Stephen?
Actually, Mitch is going to take this one.
Mitchell, welcome.
Evening, Mayor and counsel. I'm just getting ready to share my screen here for a second. Can you all see this?
Yes. Yep.
Okay. So, in the, in the past, we've talked about the Twenty-first Avenue Northeast project on the south side of Todd Park, and the need to acquire a little bit of property in order to realign the road for our safety and turning improvements on that Twenty-first Avenue. So, we have come to an agreement with Troy Cunningham to purchase the areas in yellow here and red for sixty-four-hundred dollars. And as you can see here, it's kind of our proposed alignment of our road. It's going to be cutting just through the corner here, so we don't need that much property, but one of the other benefits of this is to just kind of clean up the ownership in this area. The city currently owns this triangle piece, as well as all of Todd Park on the other side, so now we'll have complete control of the east side of the county road. So, if we need to run any utilities through there in the future, it'll all be set up for that. And we also did secure for the county as part of this agreement, a permanent easement for their highway that was just a, not a, it was a, word slipped in my mind right now, but it was not a permanent easement, so now that is, will be recorded. So, we are recommending approval to finish off the agreement here and keep the Twenty-first Avenue project moving forward.
Thank you, Mitch. Counsel, any questions? And looking for resolution, five number nine?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Osmah.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. I have number ten's a resolution reviewing options for a contract for library design services. Stephen?
Yes, I've been working with Julie, Library Director, to develop the project for the remodel of the Austin Public Library, and through that process, we have utilized some of the past development of the project that they completed to, for their fundraising effort, and we put that together with some descriptions of the work and put it out to four consultants. We received information back that one consultant was not able to bid the project due to their workload or schedule, but we did receive three proposals back for the project. And this project is identified as a six-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar project, and it will, that includes a request for carrying over some forty-thousand dollars from our 2021 budget for the library, which called for a bathroom remodel. Like to carry that over to 2022. That request will come later through Mr. Dankert, but it makes for a total project of six-hundred-and-eighty thousand. We proposed a two-month schedule to secure an engineer, five months to develop plans and specifications, and nine months for construction. So, we're anticipating construction would start in the fall of 2022, carry through the winter and into the spring. We identified through our scope of work, eleven different areas of, of work that would occur. Area one is the service desk and re, reorientating the service desk and making that a more user-friendly area for both staff and users of the library as they come and go. Then, Julie and her staff had identified other needs. One of the, item number two is a tutorial slash meeting rooms, partitioning off a space inside the existing library for two twelve-by-twelve meeting, uh, tutorial rooms. Also, item three on the scope of work is a project room. This would be actually a building addition on the west side of the existing library, and it would be a room that can be used kind of for, I guess what you could call dirty projects where you can, you can spill on the floor, you can, you can make a bit of a mess, make, make noise, things like that in this separate room, where, you know, if you think of maybe arts and crafts projects or, or things like that, that can be done in this, this project room. Item number four is a conference room, a twelve-by-twenty conference room, again, partitioning off some existing space in the library. Julie has identified that there is a need for a conference room, and she has a space for that. Item five is some secured storage. Item six is what I just was talking about earlier. It's the restroom remodel. Item seven is some porch, ceiling, lighting. Porch is the area along the north windows and the west windows. When it gets dark early in the wintertime, this area is very dark, difficult for reading, and they're looking to make some improvements there with some lighting. Item number eight is front entry doors. Item nine is the alarm system control panel and, uh, all security lighting throughout the building. Item number ten, they're looking at two awnings. One would be a fabric awning for their employee entrance, and number two would be more of a, a, a hard structure awning for their book drop area to help their staff as they're retrieving books and getting books in and out of that, the book drop. And item number eleven is an amphitheater or stage. That item was looked at as a little bit of an extra, you know, if budget allows. That would be in, in priority. This is essentially our priority list, listing them in this order, and the amphitheater kind of our last priority, so we separated that out and asked contractors actually to either, to give us a separate proposal on that so that we had a clear understanding of what that cost would be. So, we put this out to contractors, and we received, we did, we did two walkthroughs. We did a walkthrough with Armin Architects and Stan Tech. We did a thorough walkthrough with each of them, explaining, making sure they were comfortable with what we had put together in our project scope. CRW Architects, they were not able to make it for a scheduled time for a walkthrough. Then, we received the bids, and you can see the bids there for design and bidding. CRW Architecture had a bid of forty-seven-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Armin Architecture was sixty-six-thousand-five-hundred, and Stan Tech Architecture was ninety-two-thousand. Armin and Stan Tech both provided alternate costs for the amphitheater, and Stan Tech also threw out a number for construction services that would come later during construction if we wanted the architect to help with any special inspections. So, after receiving the bids, I did follow up with CRW to request that they do a walkthrough just to make sure that, as we kind of talked through things, that they felt comfortable with their bid and that they, they didn't miss anything in their proposal. So, last week, we did a walkthrough with CRW, and everything went well. They, they felt comfortable with their proposal and felt that they could do the work in that amount. The one unique thing with their proposal is that they would design the project, everything except for the mechanical and electrical portions of the work, they would push that responsibility off to the contractor that's going to bid the project. The contractor would then have to evaluate with an engineer and a mechan, an electrical or mechanical engineer what needed to be done and incorporate that into their bid. So, with CRW, we're, we're saving a little bit of money here on the front end with the design, but we have a potential to see a little bit higher bid prices from them because the contractor has to do additional work in putting their bid together, and, and that's hard, it's hard to quantify that. You can see that CRW is about twenty-thousand dollars less on their engineering and design, but will that twenty-thousand dollars just come out to be a little bit more in the bid? It's, it's hard to know that at this time, and, and we don't, we won't know that until we bid the projects. So, that's why I didn't make a recommendation in the proposal for you tonight because it's a little bit unique, the way they provided their, um, their amounts. So, it's, it's a kind of a comfort level. Do you, do you want to, want to take the risk and say it's worth saving about nineteen-thousand dollars here at the beginning and go with the lower CRW, knowing that our bids may be slightly more? Or do you want to take the more comfortable approach, go with Armin Architects at sixty-six-thousand-five-hundred, knowing that it's a complete design and it will have, has the potential to minimize our bid numbers as much as possible? With, with Armin Architects, we also have a little bit more control with what we spec out for that electrical and mechanical, where when you turn that into a design bid, you give the contractor a little bit more fluidity with how they want to design it and lay it out, and you lose a little bit of control as an owner. I think both consultants would do a very good job. It really just comes down to the dollars and cents of it, and do you want to save the twenty-thousand, nineteen-thousand here right at the very beginning in hopes that it reflects fine in our bids? Or do you want to go with the more comfortable Armin Architecture bid, which is, which is a little bit more money? So, I'm, you know, I usually come to you with a recommendation. In this case, I, I think we could go either way. It's really based on your comfort level, and if you, I guess I'd open it up to you at this time if you have any questions for me.
I tend to align with your thought process, Stephen, and go with the more of the comfort, the more inclusive Armin Architects. But counsel, any recommendations for the engineer?
Stephen, is there a risk in addition to the cost, which, I mean, it's not like costs are going down right now? I mean, do we have any like comfort level concern by the fact that they didn't really do a walkthrough and not, until like really encouraged to do it, or that there may be like delays? Because now we're waiting for another design from another person. I mean, should we factor that in the conversation too?
Um, no, I don't think that's a factor. You know, they, they did come and do the walkthrough, which I was happy they did. We tried getting it scheduled ahead of time. We just weren't able to catch up with my schedule, Julie's schedule, and, and theirs. Just didn't work out. But when they did the walkthrough, they felt very comfortable with their proposal, felt comfortable with how we had described the project. So, I think they're, they're very capable. I asked them if the, the bidding time would need to lengthen out to allow those contractors to design their own mechanical and electrical, and I told them typically we like about a four-week timeframe for bidding, and he thought that should be just fine. So, I don't see us incurring a longer bidding process because of CRW's approach. So, um, so I guess kind of no, I think it's no to both of your questions there.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Comment?
Stephen, can you tell me, just because I know how much delays are factoring into projects right now, bidding and materials and whatnot, did we get a sense from either of them? Is the timeline the same? What is that timeline?
Um, yeah, both of them, all of them, we talked about that proposed timeline of five, five months of design, nine months of construction, and, and yeah, they felt that was a comfortable timeline. You know, it's, the nine months of construction is kind of the key one because contractors won't be able to start ordering materials until they get awarded the project, and then once they order materials, there's the lead times that we're all hearing about. So, it's, it's just a matter of, uh, once we award the project, can they get the materials here within, uh, and allotted time to meet that nine-month construction schedule?
Recommendation?
Well, I, uh, I don't know if this is a question, but I would say wherever we can save money, I think that would be the best thing to do, you know?
I think it's generally, we're all about saving money, but I hate to pretend, have the potential of actually spending more in the end once it's done if the
Yeah.
design phase isn't quite complete.
But given, given that we've put an amount on how much we're going to spend, does that factor in at all? The fact that we say it's a six-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar project?
By telling the consultant that?
Well, yeah, I mean, when, when it comes to, if we went with CRW and then the electricians have to, and the mechanical is a design build, I mean, they realize that there's a limited budget that it might get cut back if they bid too much, right? Or not?
Um, yeah, right. Normally, with our bidding processes, we don't provide what our budget is when we're doing normal bids for street reconstruction and things like that. But in this case, I felt that it was important when we're laying out the eleven items in the scope of work to also provide our budget so that the consultant could look at it and say, oh, you're way out of whack. We're only going to get five of these items done, or, or no, you're, and, and they said we're, we're right in the ballpark. So, I, I do think, uh, providing the total project budget is not typical for us, but I think in this situation, when, um, trying to provide as much information to the consultant so that they can make a very educated decision on their costs and the design, I thought it was important to provide the budget. I, yeah. I don't know if that answered your question or not, but.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I kind of agree. It does give us a little bit more control if we went with Armin as far as, you know, if you leave it up to the, to the electricians and the mechanicals to design it, then you're picking apart all the bids, and it'd be easier to do that in the specifications for the bids, I think, than after. So, I guess I would make a recommendation to go with Armin Architecture.
Any further discussion on that?
Yeah, I think I will go with, uh, Councilmember at large, because if we go with
On the Armin?
Yeah. That, if, if, in that case, let's say it's something that we don't want it, we can wait on that, put a hole on it, that give us a room for that, correct? Is that what? Is that what we're putting in the plan if we go with that?
I I think what we would do, councilmember Obala, is we would bid the project with uh having the contractor identify costs for our different ten or eleven sculpt items. And then we can pick and choose which ones we're going to do to maximize our six hundred and eighty thousand dollar budget.
Okay.
I guess one last question for me. So if we were to approve the Armin right now, would that include the extra for the amphitheater at this point or no?
I would recommend just the design and bidding portion of the work at this time. That would be my, that we, whichever contractor or consultant we awarded to would be just the design and bidding at this time.
Okay. So we have a motion. Is there a second to go with Armin Architect?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Okay, further discussion? No? Then uh, looking for a resolution, I have number ten going with Armin Architecture. Um, Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Osma.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, your honor.
Thank you. I have number eleven's approving a contract with Erickson Engineering for Todd Park Pedestrian Bridge. Steven?
Yeah, we've had this project on our radar for a while. We got a Hormel Foundation grant in twenty-twenty-one to do this project, and we were not able to move it forward in twenty-twenty-one. So we requested a proposal from Erickson Engineering. They do all of the engineering for the county highway department for all of the bridges in Moore County. And they provide, they reviewed the project and provided us a proposal to complete the necessary work for the design and move it forward to to bidding with a goal of constructing this project in the fall of twenty-twenty-two. And I added some photos there behind or at the end of the memo to show the the water that's going over the existing bridge. It's eroding it away. And we're we're looking at a design that would be more of a concrete box culvert structure that would um allow, you know, fish passage with a a natural bottom in it. I know that the DNR has recently started stocking Wolf Creek out in uh Todd Park, so we want to create that natural bottom. But also a big enough area to allow water to flow both under and over during high-water events. It will still be a low-profile bridge with water will flow o- over it in the spring during high-water events or flooding events. And um, but with that, we would recommend awarding this contractor consultant services to Erickson Engineering.
Okay, counsel, any questions for Mr. Lang? Then looking for resolution, I have number eleven. So moved.
Second.
Thomas?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Osma.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, your honor.
Thanks, Tom. I have number twelve is a motion granting the planning and zoning department the power to contract with uh for the removal of junk and or illegally stored vehicles at two oh one Third Street Southeast, the Pizano property. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. Citizens addressing the council. Is there anybody uh on Zoom looking to address the council on anything that wasn't on the agenda? Okay, uh, if not, then we're on to honorary council member comments. Bill?
Nothing, your honor.
Nothing, thank you. Craig?
Uh, yes, Wednesday will be testifying in front of the House Committee on uh eliminating the seven million dollar cap on PISIG, which is a big unnecessary limitation, population limit limitation that impacts Austin. So we'll see if that's successful and uh go from there. Otherwise, I don't have any other reports.
Okay, thank you. Uh, on to counsel. Paul?
I have nothing, your honor.
Jason?
Um, just another thank you to the folks um who went up last week for Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Legislative Action Day. Uh, it was great to see. I think Austin had a really good contingent there, good conversations and very much appreciate the leadership that Administrator Clark continues to show at the Capitol, very valuable and enjoyable.
Thank you.
Obala? Um, good thing happening uh in our sport around Austin. Uh, we see uh PAKES and also Riverland Basketball. Men, they're going to nationals. So I see, saw today the fire department and police, they're escorting them out. So wish them good luck and uh that's a good thing. We are putting Austin in the map. So that I hope that will attract more athletes to come to Austin. So as we always do so. Think um it's good to send them a note. That would be amazing.
Excellent. Thank you. Jeff?
Uh, nothing, your honor.
Rebecca?
I have nothing, your honor.
Hostie?
I would just echo uh Councilman Baskin's thoughts on the the Greater Coalition of Minnesota Cities event. That was my first time being able to attend something like that. Um, special mention to Representative Mueller and Senator Darnick for taking the time to meet with us. And uh, it's a very cool event and kind of get to see how the sausage is made.
Yeah, they were very generous with their time, no doubt. Uh, and also it was great great to have good representation from Austin and and doesn't take long to walk around the Senate Building and Craig Clark, the lore of Craig Clark from being there as an employee is still very alive and well. Everybody seems to know Craig, so we're lucky to have him as our administrator just for that reason. I mean, every, he does great work, no doubt, but folks in the state know know Craig very well. So as it's evidence that they're asking him to testify and everything else for this wastewater treatment is getting a lot of legs out there. And that we're not the only community looking for wastewater treatment issues, but I know Austin is being highlighted. So it's great that we're at the forefront and appreciate Mr. Lang's uh work in putting together a PowerPoint that we had for the bonding committee when they came down and it just continues to to ramp up. We're hopeful that we can maybe get twenty million dollars out of the bonding bill on this. So still be hopeful. So if nothing else, looking for a motion to adjourn to Monday, March twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two at five thirty.
I move to adjourn the meeting to March twenty-first.
Right on. Is there a second?
Second.
Could you say the whole thing, Jason, like Obala did?
I defer to my colleagues.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned. Five-minute recess until the work session. Ah, movie time.